... Oviedo City Council meeting, it is Monday, February 3rd. It is approximately 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. If everybody could rise for the pledge of allegiance, and I see we have a bunch of our firefighters in the audience. Gentlemen, can you come on up and lead us in the pledge, please? Come on, sweetie, you want to come up too? All yours, sir.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Looking spiffy tonight?
Thank you. If you would care to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity once again to gather in our wonderful community and tonight recognize some very special folks. And Lord, we just ask your blessings on our nation, on our state, on our county, on our city. Lord, we pray for many blessings and accolades to continue for this wonderful community. We're particularly asking tonight that you bless those that look after others. And tonight, we're looking at the Honor Flight of Central Florida and all of their efforts, and our employees that have assisted in these endeavors, giving of their time and their resources. Lord bless them, let them continue this mission, and give them grace and encouragement. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Chief, you might as well stay because the next item is yours. First item ceremonial is the Honor Flight Participation Appreciation. So Chief White, if you're okay with Mr. Cobb, I'll just turn it right over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. We're honored tonight and have been asked by the Honor Flight of Central Florida to recognize some of our employees who have actively participated in this wonderful program over the past year. You've heard of this before, they've come before council on one other occasion. But it's a great feeling among all of us, department directors and city staff, that our employees are so engaged in so many efforts, and this being just one of them. But our folks that we're looking at tonight have actively participated in the flights to Washington DC for our Central Florida veterans to get a chance to see those memorials who otherwise probably would not have that opportunity if it weren't for some of these local resources. So tonight, I'd like to bring forward Mr. Edward Riordan and Alan Wilson, as well of Honor Flight of Central Florida. They would like just a moment to address city council and recognize our folks.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, good evening, council, and good evening, Mayor. Thank you so much for having us down here tonight. We thought it very important to come on down and recognize the members of the Oviedo Fire Department and the chief for their volunteer efforts over this past year. Honor Flight Central Florida is a 501(c)(3) well-volunteer organization with a mission to take our WWII veterans up to Washington DC at no expense to them, so they can view and reflect at their memorials, and we do this to honor them for their service throughout country. Being a 501(c)(3) and a well-volunteer group with the mission to take 150 veterans up to DC last year, you can imagine what a lofty goal that was. And we can only do that with the support of volunteers to make that possible. As you might imagine, taking veterans with an average, at an average age of 89, is not an easy task to facilitate them on planes and take them up there and then get them in and out of motor coaches at five or six different memorials, and bringing them in and out of Arlington National Cemetery, so they can see the changing of the guard at the Tomb of the Unknown. That makes for a very, very busy and hectic day, and they are folks that do require a lot of attention. Even prior to flight time, we ask that our paramedic volunteers come down to flight orientations and review the health status of the veterans that are going to fly with us, so that they're familiar with all the issues and the challenges that they might have to face on travel day. I can tell you, nobody works harder on Honor Flight Day than our volunteer paramedics. They are the ones that are very attentive to the needs of our 80 and 90-year-olds that are traveling with us. They're moving them in and out of wheelchairs and up and down wheelchair lifts on the back of the bus, and attending to, you know, patching leaks, as they say in the service, and attending to, attending to their needs to make sure that they're safe and that they're well taken care of during the day. It was a year ago that I went into the Oviedo Fire Department and introduced myself to Chief White, and began to tell him a little bit about Honor Flight with the hope that I might ask his support and finding some volunteers among the department. And I was very delighted to find out that Chief was quite familiar with Honor Flight and very supportive of our mission. And with his help, within only a matter of a couple of days, I was absolutely amazed, all of us were, with only a matter of a couple of days, we had several folks from the Oviedo Fire Department that stepped up the volunteer and helped us out. And we flew 100, total of 150 WWII vets from Central Florida up last year on five separate flights. On each flight, we ran with two paramedics for each 25 that traveled with us, each group with 25 that traveled with us. And it was, we were so pleased to have so many members of the Oviedo Fire Department that we wanted to come down tonight and make sure they got recognized and appreciated personally. And also, not just for the hard work that they did, but also for being the ambassadors that they have been in promoting the Honor Flight mission and asking for additional volunteers. Right now, we have more volunteers than we can shake a stick at in terms of paramedics, and it's all thanks to the efforts of the chief and the folks in the Oviedo Fire Department that have done that. So, all that being said, we have some individuals that we would like to thank, and we have some small presentations that we'd like to make. We have some certificates of recognition for the members of the department. We'd like to, we'd like to thank the following gentleman. One not here, I'll thank the one in absentia first, and that's Dana Allen. Dana traveled with us and has since retired from the Oviedo Fire Department, and he is probably enjoying the warm waters of the Caribbean tonight. But we'd like to thank Ben Clark. We'd like to thank Dave Barsky, newly promoted lieutenant, I understand. We'd like to thank Manny Eldefonso. And we'd like to thank the first gentleman in the Oviedo Fire Department that I heard from, and that's Mike Stroh. And also because he helped promote our mission and get the support that we needed during the year. We also have a little presentation for the chief as well. Chief, we have a picture of our very last flight in October. This is our group assembled in front of the WWII Memorial. Thank you very much, chief. Thank you all for giving us a couple of minutes tonight, we appreciate it. You should be very proud of all these gentlemen and the spirit of volunteerism in both supporting Honor Flight and in honoring our most senior veterans. Alan, did you have anything you'd like to say?
No, it's just that Oviedo has a face for all of the veterans, all of their families, and all of the friends and the people of Central Florida, in these guys every time we go to Washington.
Ed, your group, thank you so much, and that is quite an honor, what you are able to give to those veterans who cannot travel, so, great job. Alrighty, that is the end of our ceremonial items. We'll move on to item number two, which is the approval of the minutes for January 21st, our regular section. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 21st?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
No, sir.
Left, right? Hearing none, call the vote, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number three is public comment. We have one written request this evening, and that is from Mr. Shifftel. Colonel? How are you tonight, sir?
I'm doing great.
Sir, we just need your name and address for the record, and three minutes of yours.
Yeah, I and my wife, Marty, I'm James E. Shiflet, my wife, Marty, and we live in 1954 Crystal Downs Court. And we've been in the area. I spent 28 years in the Army, and I wanted to come speak reference to the minutes from last week, in reference to a proposed plan out in the Twin Rivers area. I'm going to give a little bit of background. I came to Orlando to be a PMCAT. I was a colonel in the Army, and we built the largest virtual training simulation in the Army. It was about $1 billion for equipping the entire Army with virtual simulators. I think if you go out, you can probably see them out there. When I came, and this was a part of a defense plan to co-load three additional board-select O6 PMs here in the Orlando area. I was also privileged to work in the Defense Department at that time in a particular job. And the plan was to basically co-locate a major activity, a major support and command in Orlando due to its co-location with the Navy, which develops a large number of simulators for the Navy, and two, the research park. The research park was just getting started. Just as a note, that research park was bankrupt when I came in October of 92. It was fixing to go out of business, and then when the, when the co-location came, it seems that everything seemed to move along really nice. One of the considerations in the decision to locate in Orlando was the quality of life. This was basically one of the premier positions to go in the Orlando area, and it was very, very impressive. The simulation industry now, according to a recent article in the Orlando Sentinel, is about a $5 billion a year business, which is very significant. And that basically is tied directly to Oviedo and to the community in Twin Rivers. I think a large number of the jobs are either directly tied to the research park, where I still work there, or to the, to the University of Central Florida. It is the attraction of the jobs and a great place to live is what brought a lot of people in here, and I think there will be some other people that will kind of come in later on. The homeowners association, I was in a meeting in January, and basically, the golf group said, "Here's a plan, and we're getting out of here." Okay? And basically, that was kind of a spirited discussion. It basically had three things. It looked like they were going to add additional housing, which was going to put burdens on the traffic ingests and the quality of life, of which everyone basically is opposed to that. And we had basically a few questions that, because in that plan, it appeared that part of it was to take the golf course, chop it up, and turn it over to the city. So I really had three questions. What is your particular knowledge about this particular plan? And I know nothing's been submitted. Two, what's the position on municipal golf course? And, and, and those are the kind of questions that I think a lot of people are looking for answers for. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Appreciate it. But we can't answer those questions.
You can't answer those questions?
The reason why, Colonel, is if that hearing does come before us, it'll be known as what's called quasi-judicial, and in which case, we become judge and jury. And I think Mr. Colbert could probably explain it better. We really have to stay very neutral on this until an application is submitted.
Okay.
Mr. Colbert, could you help out a little bit?
Yes, in, in, in certain instances, basically, the city council sits as a, as a judiciary body, quasi-judicial it's called, as you mentioned, Mayor. And in those instances, the council can't get information outside the hearing, it can't take positions until the hearing is held and all the evidence is in, and then whatever decision the council makes will have to come from the evidence presented at the hearing. That's a state statute, it doesn't only apply to Oviedo, it applies to every city and county in the entire state of Florida. The good news is, those hearings are advertised, they're public, and the public is invited to attend, and the public is invited to provide relevant information and comment at that time, all of which can be taken into consideration by council at the proper time.
Okay, thank you very much. What was kind of strange about that is they applied that in part of their plan, they're going to turn this over to the city, so I didn't know exactly how they invented that particular thing. So it applied in their presentation, there was some knowledge that there was some desire to have additional park, which I can either confirm or deny, and I understand. The question I would have is, I understand, and, you know, what action should I take or we take to basically ensure that we can, you know, not wait until they have spent a lot of money, and then it becomes an issue of them saying, "I need to get my money back," because the golf group has particularly no interest in the community. They've said, "We're leaving." Okay? So the question is, I don't want to go out and spend a whole bunch of money, and then say, "Well, just take all this something, cost."
Well, sir, neither the city nor the legal system would have anything to do with controlling how much money they spend. However, the city does have the ability to hold a hearing and consider everything that everybody has to say. From a legal standpoint, and you're looking at me when you ask the question, the thing that I think you can do best is probably stay informed. When the notice comes out, be sure your neighbors know. If you and your neighbors have opinions, you may want to have a homeowner's meeting or two and discuss your own strategy, and who's going to be a spokesman to the city, and what information y'all are going to bring to the city that you'd like the city to consider at that time.
Okay, we've done that. Thank you very much.
Alright, sir.
Out of adversity comes organization, so we got our block captains getting organized in the Twin Rivers and the Caroline area, and we shall continue. I would ask you a question, can we do anything now to petition to preempt as opposed to waiting? That was a real question I had.
There's not a legal preemption to cut off a hearing at a.
No, no, I'm not trying to cut a hearing. I'm trying to understand the position, and if there are a large number of people that are opposed to this, I'd like to communicate that now, as opposed to letting it go later on. Is there anything we can do to petition the board to at least have an open discussion on this? Or do we have to wait until they file?
You need to wait for the hearing.
No, no other recourse?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Colonel, what I could recommend, and I've had some conversations with a few of the neighbors who have called me, I know that the golf group is going to have a public meeting with the members of the HOA.
That will be a spirited discussion.
And that's your opportunity, right there, to let them know how the neighborhood feels about it. And wait until there's actually an application, because we don't even know what's in the application. There, as Mr. Colbert said, there's nothing been presented yet.
Yep. Well, I mean, they implied that they were going to turn this over to the city, and I said, "Geez, that's, that's interesting." I don't think the city knows anything about that. Anything else, any other recommendations for the concerned citizens of Oviedo?
I think you're doing a good job right now, and I would just, as Mr. Colbert said, watch for the signs and speak with them, because they're really the ones that have to make the application, and there's so many ifs and so many steps, and, Mr. Cobb, I'm sure you can concur, that this hasn't even incubated yet, has it?
Uh, no, sir.
From the staff perspective, because the staff has had more conversations with them than any of us.
From the staff perspective, all they, all they have done is contacted us and asked questions, and we provided the information that they've requested.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, because if they didn't like that meeting last time where they were arguing about this $8,000 delta in the fence, you're sure not going to like putting houses in floodplains, so, so it'll be kind of interesting.
And those are the types of things, Colonel, that they have to overcome. They have so many steps, and so, it's, when developers have public meetings, like the one that you attended last week, they make, they make it appear as if everything's going to happen tomorrow. There's so many legal steps, so many application processes, so many hearings, it's going to take a while.
Yep.
And that's even if an application comes in.
Yes. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Anything for the Colonel? Colonel, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That was the only written request I have. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address this? Seeing none, we will close the public comment and move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council? May I make a, make a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Councilman, councilwoman? Councilman Britton? You're good? You're good? Alrighty. That being said, motion before us is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, it is a public hearing. It is ordinance number 1579, which is amending ordinance number 1472, which established a special service fee for indebtedness searches in connection with a real estate transaction. Mr. Cobb? Barbara, did you write that?
That sounds a lot, there's a lot.
Did you write that, Barbara?
That sounds like some money.
Oh, Lonny, okay. We pay by the word, don't we? Go ahead, Brian, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. In a nutshell, at your last meeting, you conducted first reading.
Can I use that? Is that a proper phrase from now on? I could say, "In a nutshell, this ordinance is."
There you go. At your last meeting, you conducted first reading of this ordinance. You adopted ordinance 1472 in 2009, and it established a $35 fee for indebtedness services, searches, which we call lean searches. This, we do these searches every time there's a real estate transaction in the city. And the ordinance 1472, the only way to change that fee would be to amend the ordinance. So what ordinance 1579 does is that it deletes the fee established by ordinance number 1472, and makes a statement that fees for these lean searches will be adopted by resolution by the city council. And then this ordinance, 14, ordinance 1579 will be codified into the code of ordinances. And this will give the city council the flexibility it needs to establish fees that are appropriate based on the time and effort that it takes to do these types of lean searches. Tonight, the city council is asked to read the ordinance by title only to conduct a public hearing and to adopt ordinance number 1579.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Colbert, could you read ordinance number 1579 by title only, please?
Certainly, Mayor. This ordinance is entitled an Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, Providing for the Establishment of Fees, Amending Section 1 of Ordinance Number 1472, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Implementing Administrative Actions, Providing for Savings Provision, Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification, Providing for an Effective Bid.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Excuse me. As I mentioned earlier, this is a public hearing. I do not have any written requests to speak on this item. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1579.
Second. We have motion and a second. Councilwoman, any further questions? Council, Deputy Mel Schenk? Nope. Councilman Britton? Councilman Hackett? Alrighty. All that being said, the motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1579. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinances, which is item number 10, we have none this evening. Resolutions, item number 11, we have resolution number 2788-14, which is a revised fee schedule. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually a companion to the ordinance that you just adopted. As you know, the ordinance 1579 deleted the earlier $35 fee established by ordinance number 1472. This fee, this resolution amends the fee, the fee schedule that you adopted back in September to establish a fee of $75 for indebtedness searches. It's recommended tonight that the city council adopt resolution number 2788-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hackett?
I think the motion to adopt resolution 2788.
Second. A motion and a second? Councilman, anything? Councilman?
It's a companion.
Councilwoman?
I do have one question for you, Brian. When was the last time this was raised? The fees were raised?
This, this is, the original fee of $35 was established in 2009, and then this is the 75, this, this, this fee of $75, this is the first time it's really been addressed.
So that's why there's such a jump?
Yes, ma'am.
Because you haven't raised it since 2009, you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think, as you said, Cruzy, it's, you've figured out what the real cost is, because it has to go to multiple different departments, and there's a lot more numbers originally actually, when the 2009 fee was set, things have changed that you have to now do.
Correct.
That have been added on additionally, too. So there've been additional services that have been necessary since then, and because it's codified, you couldn't change it. It's a good idea, it's a great idea.
Anything else?
I would, I would just like to add, so everyone on the dais is aware, in August, there was a change in the far bar contract here in Central Florida that's used. And the far bar now requires municipal lean searches be done by the sellers of their presidential property. The clerk's office has seen a tremendous increase in requests for these searches, where in the past, it was an optional search of, at the buyer's expense to do. Now it's a required search at the seller's expense. So any transaction that's done, they get a request, so. It's, and it's not just us, obviously, it's all municipalities, and I'm sure Mr. Colbert will have something similar like this coming up, and probably a lot of the cities and counties that they represent. But that's just the rationale of why it's happening.
Is there anything else? No. Seeing none, the motion on the table is to adopt. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. No discussion items tonight. City managers report. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing. I sent you an email requesting a special meeting for February the 24th. This is, this meeting is in case that we need to have you take action on an interlocal agreement with Seminole County regarding the sales tax referendum. The initial information we're getting is that we may not receive the interlocal agreements until March. If that is the case, I would still like to have the meeting on the 24th and request a work session with you. We've been working with Mr. Kavanaugh regarding the development of our park, and he has been out soliciting bids for the development of the park. We, my latest report, we have four bidders, and the bids are pretty high. And so, we wanted to be, we wanted to have a discussion with you to talk about how we can develop the park with what we have, and we're going to have, have to ask for some policy direction to move forward with the development of the park. So he's asked if we could do that on the 24th, regardless if we have the interlocal agreements or not, that he would like to come in and have a discussion with us. He's going to be meeting with staff until that time to hopefully come up with a strategy to recommend to you, but we'd like to use the 24th as an opportunity to initiate our discussions on developing our park.
Anybody, any issues? Okay. Mr. Cobb, I would set that, set it up as a work session, then?
Okay.
In the, in the chambers, because we can always have this special meeting if we have to, from the work session tables, because it'll really just be a codification of what we approved this evening, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it'll be just short, quick, call to order, type of thing?
Alright, yes, sir.
Great. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
That's it, Mayor.
Mr. Colbert?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Alrighty, moving along. Councilman Britton?
I don't have a whole lot to, there's a, we're going to have a Calno meeting in Castleberry on Wednesday, and I just wanted to kind of echo, I don't, we, we had the President's Day, or President's Day, Martin Luther King Day festivities out at Round Lake Park, and I just want to echo how nice I think the park is looking. Drew, there's one question I had for you, though. I'd never saw the, the water fountains that we were going to put out there. Are those installed?
Come on up, Drew.
Please.
I've got to poke Drew about water fountains.
The hose bib is in place, the water fountain's not in place yet. The hose bib isn't in place, and we're working right now, we're working on, we just got pricing to put electricity to the front pavilion, and we're still working. Water fountains are. Water fountains are at the old building, but we're looking at providing, but that's a kind of a costly.
Be chilled water, look at that.
As a costly event because of having to get the water and electricity.
Chilled water, with crushed ice too?
Uh, no, no, no crushed ice. But we are in the process of doing that.
No, I think.
Got to get electricity to the site first.
Yeah, I think the park is looking good and we're trying to schedule a meeting to kind of leverage our goodwill with OCIA and ION and have a meeting with Pastor Jones to get his involvement to, to try to spur some more participation in those groups and see if we can keep that momentum going. So I think we're trying to do that on Thursday, Brian?
I'm not sure. I, I know Ben has sent an email today, reaching out to them once again to get an idea of what dates that the pastor's available, but I'm not sure if Thursday's the date or not.
Okay, I'll wait, I'll wait to hear from you. But that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Next up is myself. I sent an email out this morning to everybody concerning a tour of Numors. I know some have responded, others, check your calendars and department directors also. Numors, as some of you may, may know, was the recipient of all of the funds raised over at the car show this past Saturday. So I got to meet a few of the doctors and a couple of the directors and they were very excited to have us come down and take a tour of their new hospital facility. So be it, we'd have to be down there at ten thirty on the twelfth, it would be an hour and a half tour. And they're going to take us through and just show us what they do. Barbara is coordinating who is going to attend because she'll have to notice the meeting of course, since there's multiple members going. But if we can just let her know as soon as you guys can, if you are able to make it, I think it'll be a, a great field trip to see what they're all about. They are opening a local office up here just outside the corporal limits of Oviedo on Redbug, so they are looking at becoming a part of the community as well. And they have been great, I know, with a lot of our events and sponsoring and coming out, so that's, that's exciting. Sticking with the hospital theme, also today, I copied everybody, I'm sure everybody saw or read in the news that our partners in Oviedo ER, Central Florida Regional Hospital, has decided to move forward and apply for a CON in order to create a full-service hospital right here in Oviedo. That was really always the plan, right from the get-go, as, as we knew, just the need has been far greater than even they anticipated. This is just the first step in the process. They have to file a notice of intention, which they did last Friday. They sent the press release out today. I think the actual applications go in in sometime in March. There may or may not be an appeal from another network, which would really be a shame considering that those networks have had their opportunity to build here in the city of Oviedo. They stood at that podium and told us they were building here in the city of Oviedo, lots of empty promises, and then they just all walked away. And Central Florida Regional has made a twenty, thirty million dollar commitment to us. So we will keep our eyes on that. The hospital will be looking for support from the community. They're going to be out at a lot of the different community events, they're going to be visiting a lot of the community groups. They're going to set up a website that folks are going to be able to go to and just enter in a quick note of support. So they, they really have a whole plan coming and there'll be more details coming out shortly. So that is certainly extremely exciting news. Been a long time goal for the city, so we'll keep our eyes on it. And with that, that is the end of my report, so we'll go on to Deputy Mayor.
And that is great news and they've been, as you said, in the game for twelve years now. They've bought property.
Forty acres.
And, and been there from the beginning, from the first C O N to the second C O N and now, you know, they're getting their turn and they're following through with it, so that's wonderful. Farmers Market was this past weekend very well, it went well again. You know, Chief put out, and I will echo again and again and again, lock your cars. You know, people are, look for opportunities that are easy and, and when you leave your cars unlocked or leave car, keys in your car, you're making the opportunity that much easier for someone. So make sure you lock your cars, close your garage doors. I think once over the past twelve years, there was one night when the officer just came by my house and knocked on the door and said, your garage didn't go all the way down, it bounced back up and I appreciated that. I've done it to my neighbors many times, so make sure that your garages are put down, keys, and don't leave any valuables in the car. Lock your cars because it's just making it too easy for someone and groups of people that are, that prey on that.
Do we still do that, Chief? Knock on doors? Okay, great.
Chief, why don't you come on up, since Deputy Mayor brought it up, why don't you just fill everybody in on what's going to start happening, so when it starts happening, everyone's prepared?
Well, we've already started. With the, as Deputy Mayor said, there's a group operating out of Orange County. It's a loose leaf group. They, it's going to communities. They specifically look for unlocked vehicles, open the doors, take whatever they can. In several cases, there's been keys to the cars, in the unlocked cars, so the cars have been taken. So what, one of the things we're going, doing along with working and investigation along with Orange County, Seminole County, it's Winter Springs, because a lot of this is happening in eastern Seminole County and Orange County, is we're in the process of going door-to-door to every resident in the city. For lack of a word, we're preaching to lock the cars door, car doors. Unfortunately, we don't live in a perfect world where you can leave your, your cars unlocked, your, your garage doors open and your houses unlocked. Like Deputy Mayor said, there are people that are, that take advantage of that and we're in the process of trying to get that word across in person to every resident in the city.
Did I see something about, or read something that you sent out about a door hanger or some kind of a hanger?
Yes, each resident gets pamphlet on safety tips, a basic door hanger for their rearview mirror to put up, basically stating there's nothing in the car and reminding them not to leave things in the car. And then there's a personalized letter for me that they're also getting also.
So, Deputy Mayor?
No, it's great. Like I said, I, you know, it's, I know neighbors who appreciate just getting a knock on a door. I know a neighbor who got it knocked twice at the door and was wondering at two in the morning why the police were back at her door and was like, oh, it didn't go down again, thanks. You know, turned around, said, thank you, sir. You know? So sometimes you make mistakes, but you know, it's, it's being vigilant and making sure your car door is locked and not, not making it easy. At least, you know, that, that much, don't make it too easy.
And, and Councilon, I know one of the local TV stations is in fact out with one of my officers now who is doing the door-to-door and they're out with him as he, as he does that this evening.
I'm going to guess it's channel six because I saw the van going down.
That is correct and it'll be on eleven o'clock, and it'll be on the eleven o'clock news.
Great. Thank you. Hold on, you got that video? Councilman Hankin, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just piggybacking on stuff for safety in the community, I talked to the chief several times over the last couple of months about texting and driving and, you know, basically distracted driving. We've seen a lot of very bad accidents in the city the last couple of months. Some people lost their lives and, you know, over the last couple of months, I've, I've been like super sensitive to this and I'm watching and, and people are driving, not just here, but all over, driving and drifting in their lanes and when you look over, they're always on the phone. So the chief's going to put out some signs just to remind everybody with the texting and driving, you know, it is against the law. It is a secondary offense. It is against the law to text while you drive. But in my opinion, driving around here lately, I, I don't even want to drive around here lately and, and, and that's just calling what it is. You know, young kids getting their license have enough to deal with, but you know, people got to stop texting and driving. And I've, I've already talked to Representative Broder about this and, and asked him to take a look at this, but it, it's really got to stop because, you know, when you're looking down at your phone, it's, you know, it's like driving drunk. And, and I see it all the time. In the, in the last week, I had, in my car, every time this happened and I looked over, I made a little check and I seen over a hundred people in this city texting and driving, crossing into lanes. Seen this one guy coming out delivering something the other day, driving down four nineteen, basically the whole way with his head down. It, it's really getting ridiculous. So we're going to make a little public awareness just to remind everybody in a hurry that text message can wait and, you know, distracted driving in general, keep your eye on the road. You know, it's just really getting bad. So the chief's just going to work around it, just to try to remind everybody, you know, be careful out there. Some of these accidents we had, you know, I don't know what the cause was, but people got to keep their eyes on the road. So he's going to work on some stuff if you see some, some notices and stuff, so be careful out there. That's all I got, Mayor.
Council? Well, I guess I'll just add to what Councilman Hankin just said.
I hate going to the last.
I know. Everything's been covered, but I agree with you. I think traffic is getting very, very heavy right now, congested, and people aren't paying as much attention. We have a lot of construction going on and I see it myself when I go out there, people are just all over the road, not paying attention, want to pass you up so quick because they get annoyed just sitting there, you know, waiting in traffic. So I think having some awareness for that will, will help save lives, help stop some of the accidents and keep people safe. And that's all I have for tonight.
Future meeting dates, we have, let's see, next Monday, the tenth, we have a work session at five thirty. Monday, February seventeenth is our next regular session at six thirty. Monday, February twenty-fourth may be a special session slash work session, but definitely a work session.